While this meeting is ordered, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Please take your seats. Roll call, please. Ister.
Savage.
Roche's.
Here.
Barnhart.
Here.
Martina.
Here.
There was an executive session held prior to tonight's council meeting to discuss possible litigation. Is there any public comment on agenda items at this time? Please say your name, ma'am.
Sandy Hahn. And we are here. You missed, you have Climate Control Plan. I figured that that's our climate action.
Yeah.
There are people here who are interested. We had 150 signatures on our online petition. I think this is a good program. It is proactive for the city of Sunbury. And nobody's going to tell you what to do. Somebody's going to dig up the facts. And the city of Sunbury or the committee, hopefully the committee, so that the council doesn't have to do everything. We'll come up with a plan and then council can approve or disapprove. So that's where we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on agenda items at this time? Okay, moving on. All right, I'll make the motion for the approval of the minutes and reports. Minutes of April 14th and 20 meetings and reports of the Fire Department, Police Department, Treasurer, Controller, Code Office, Health Department, Parks and Rec, and Police Commission. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ister. Savage.
Yes.
Roche's.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
I do have two proclamations. The first one is Building Safety Month. So as our jurisdiction is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety of the essential roles of our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both everyday life, even when disasters strike. Whereas our confidence and resilience of the buildings that make up our community achieved through the endeavors, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and other construction industries who work year-round to ensure the safety of construction of the buildings. And whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, tribal, federal offices who are experts in the built environment to continue and create and implement the highest quality of codes and standards to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, and play. Whereas these modern building codes and standards include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildfires, floods, and earthquakes. Whereas the Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code to remind the public about the crucial role our communities largely unknown protect for public safety. Our code officers who assure our safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. Whereas each observance of the Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider and commit to improving building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all by local, state, tribal, federal building safety, fire preventions, and protecting lives and properties. Now therefore, I Josh Roche, City of Sunbury, do here, I proclaim the month of May as Building Safety Month. That was the first one. And then the next one is EMS Week. And that reads, "To designate a week of May 18th through 24th, 2025, as Emergency Medical Services Week, EMS Week." Whereas emergency medical services are vital public services. Whereas members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Whereas the access of emergency care drastically improves the survival and recovery rate for those who experience sudden illness or injury. Whereas emergency medical services fills healthcare gaps by providing important out-of-hospital care, including medicine, follow-up care, and telemedicine. Whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other hospital care providers. Whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating the Emergency Medical Services Week. Therefore, I Josh Roche, City of Sunbury, do recognize this event in the city of Sunbury from May 18th through the 24th, 2025. Moving on, Code Office update slash report, Councilman Warner.
Well, I'd just like to state first before Cheryl takes over to... The Code Office is not out to punish anybody. We do work with the public hand-in-hand. So we're not out to, we're just out to make the city safe. And we do get a lot of calls during the week, and it's for the job to do. Cheryl, would you like to give the update, please?
If you all saw your report, you will see that we finished April with a little over 39,000. And year-to-date, we're 35,000 above last year. And that's due to a lot of, we're catching a lot of landlords that aren't paying for their permits. So we've been citing them. And just a couple reminders. Remember to cut your grass. And if you cut your grass, don't blow it in the street. Unfortunately, Steve's not here because he'd be able to tell you that dogs are the street sweeper. And it's very dangerous for the motorcycles. If your grasses 10 inches are higher, you're going to get a ticket. We're not going to give you warnings at this time of the year. And if you have any issues with your ticket, give the office a call and we'll, we're willing to work with you. And if you see any code issues in your neighborhood, feel free to reach out to us. The office number is 286-4207. And my direct extension is 5530. Okay? And all of the officers are out working hard, doing inspections. We've had a lovely time with the Fire Department, the night of the tornado or wind shears, whatever. So yeah, if you have any questions, seriously, feel free to call the office.
Can I add to that? The Code Office, when on nice days, they park their car and they do walk the streets.
Oh, yeah.
So if you see one walking and you have any questions, feel free to stop.
Letting that.
Is that it, John? Sure. All right, thank you. Chief, you're up, sir.
All right, for the month of April, basically, Sunbury Police Department dispatched to over 788 incidents. Of the 788 incidents, we had 199 traffic stops. We got over 800 phone calls received with the Police Department this month. We're close to about 3,000 calls for April so far for police incidents. At this point also, the roundup that we conducted with the magistrate, Police Department's office, as of last week, I put out some numbers, preliminary numbers. We know that over 420 warrants were taken care of in the two-to-three week period. Preliminary numbers with the amount of money that was collected on back fines, as well as any outstanding fines that have not come in yet. I should, Police Department also advised us here, but you know those numbers. We're continuing to basically conduct form roundup. We have another form roundup scheduled, maybe later on in May. We'll, we'll be taking probably close to 20 to 30 officers who basically are on the outside who are assisting us. We have TSB Vice, working with the FBI as well, with some initiatives that we have in the city. Guys are working hard. Guys, the girls as well. CAC Investigations, that's Fall Acrostic Center, with the amount of child abuse allegations that come in. They're catching up on those as well. And we get many of those throughout the week. One of the part-time officers from County Sheriff's, Detective, who works part-time for us, she's also assisting our office with some of those back investigations as well. Just recently, one of our defendants, we're put up in Florida. Just had notification, the governor assigned a warrant for leasing an individual from Florida, come back to Pennsylvania to stand for, I believe, two outstanding sexual assaults. If you want to pick him up, do it in the next week. And that's about it for the Police Department.
Do you just want to keep going down through the whole?
Sure. Police Department, $250,000 grant. Myself and Mr. Backer, and with Mr. Mendel, Secret Lieutenant Robert Chakweli, they agreed to partner with us with the grant. Mr. Backer was kind enough to basically take the grant on, where he's going to be assisting in applying for that grant. That would be, my idea was to put cameras at every bus stop. Look at bus stops. We have approximately, Mr. Backer, we have 20 bus stops in the city where we're looking to put these cameras with license plate readers that if somebody would basically commit a violation from the red lights on the bus, it would capture the license plate and help us in the prosecution end of it with that. Also, these cameras would also assist the city with having more cameras in different areas to help crime prevention. And so that, I believe, Mr. Backer has to be in, that grant has to be in June 18th?
The June 20th or June 16th, and then June 1st, depending on the port.
So we're looking at, looking at that for that grant. Again, we're going to be meeting different occasions to see what we're going to be doing. These cameras can also be put up, maybe at the tennis courts, down in the baseball fields as well, obviously. So that's a great project and appreciate Mr. Mendel coming on board with us, partnering with us with this project. The next one is the dedicated hotline. I spoke with the city clerk, Jeff. Jeff helped me with getting a dedicated hotline basically set up for the city that would only be city complaints and that line would be set up in the Police Department where it would blink red. We're basically looking for anonymous complaints, you can say completely anonymous, but we would accept any type of drug information as well as high crime. It's not a line you can call for parking complaint or domestic issue or something like that. It's dedicated just for drug intel as well as major crime. Mr. Jeff had talked that project on with me. He has already completed that, or will move phones at some point here in the future. And then what I'd like to do with that, and we'll bring it back to council, is maybe get one of the Lamar signs, billboards, and put it up on the billboards coming in and out of the city. The city residents can basically give those, that number a call with the drug intel for the, any handle, major crime. Crime Watch, looking to start the Crime Watch back up in Sunbury. Going to be a little bit more strict than what it was or what we were in the past. May 28th is going to be that meeting. That's going to be at the Police Department. Anybody who would like to join the Crime Watch is, they're more than welcome to come to that meeting. I will be looking, reaching out to the Penn State State Police to actually have a Crime Watch class itself. They do a week-long class, a couple hours a night, just to, so we don't set people out there doing something, you know, that they shouldn't be doing, but more, you know, a set, another set of eyes for the Police Department. And that'd, that'd help along that line, so.
The time, the time for that, May 28th?
That's at 5:00 PM at the Police Department, in the turn room. That's going to be the citizens' feedback forum. They generated a forum that is a front-and-back type forum that basically, it's more of a, gives us face, gives us some kind of feedback on the Police Department and what the citizens would like to see more of, what they actually see when officers respond, what the response time is for a citizen. And just a, it's a backlining statistics-type forum. And what we're going to do with that is we're going to come house to house. We're divided into different boards. I'm going to have a police officer, multiple, probably two police officers. If council would like to walk along, they're more than welcome to do that for the next two to three weeks. I'd like to try to get door to door as much as I can, get as many houses as I can. And again, just try to save on the mail-in, the envelopes and things like that. But there'll also be forms on, on the website as well for people to fill out. So probably give that to Jeff for next Monday, give that form actually online as well. Besides, you can door to door. I'd like to go door to door. Main reason is just getting people to know us, getting to know the different officers that we have a lot of different faces. But just getting out and getting out in the community and actually seeing the people. Along with that, I'm also starting foot patrols. Foot patrol's going to be in different wards. Will be assigned by me to the officers. So if you see the officers, please speak with them, knock with them. You're going to see me on foot as well. I wouldn't expect any of my officers to do anything that I want to do. So I'll be out there as well. And then we come down to exterior property camera registration. So what I'd like to do with property camera registration is begin a forum online where people can register their property cameras. So if you have a camera at your house, whether it's a Ring Doorbell, whether it's a, you know, camera facing this way, facing that way, I'd like to get just a registration process where if we have a crime in that area, we could come to you. I'm not asking for any type of access to your cameras or anything like that, but knowing where these cameras are would help with some of our crime activities. And it's not going to be something that's going to be posted, like, you know, showing where these cameras are on any type of map. We would be information for the Police Department. We would, through a lot one, which is a, they call Gallery. We would create a map that would show us the different cameras and where they would be at, and the guys, where the girls, basically, are all officers who go to those cameras and ask the individual at the house whether they would help us and supply us with video for a timeframe. Again, it's not something you have to do. It's something that they're asking. I think it would help as well with the Police Department and any type of crime that we have in those areas. We're going, are we going to go into old business?
If you're finished.
I'm finished. I mean, you got awfully, you got awfully windy there today.
Right now.
All right, so I guess, is that it, Chief, though?
Yes.
All right, so I guess moving to old business, now Chief, once again, if you want to talk about the truck and Mayville, how they came down last week.
So Mayville Police Department, they had an Axon on their vehicles. They only, they're a very small department. And I reached out to the chief, knowing that they only had one vehicle. And we had spoke about selling the F-150. The trading value was $44,000. That's what they wanted to trade on to it. I wasn't happy with that. So for the reason of the Mayville, told them to come down, they took it for a ride. And we sold the F-150 for 55,000 versus the $4,000.
I thought you were trying to go for a raise.
Correct. So we got the 55,000. They would like, I just got a text from the chief up there. They would like to come down this week to, they're going to write out a check for the 55,000 to the city of Sunbury. They would like to know who you would like to use as a lottery so they can get the truck and pay it. I also, as we spoke last meeting, was looking at selling one of our LPRs and talking to their council, going to be able to sell them an LPR for 4,000, which is far above what I told them basically get at one point. So one set of those have been sold as well. So they're, I wrote separate checks to the city of Sunbury for $4,000. Spoke with Mr. Backer. Due to that being a grant that was used for the LPRs, we'll put that back on to the LPRs that we recently just purchased. So, and once I sell the other one, I believe I do have a buyer for that other set. We can put that back on and that's the help we're provided.
And that's going back towards, and that, the vehicle that we replaced, the F-150?
Correct. So basically, we go on the Axon project that we spent the 10 years with the, that money, we go back on to that grant.
So the sale of the truck will go towards the new vehicle?
The sale of the vehicle, correct.
And the LPR, you said, go towards the Axon, correct?
Go towards the Axon. So the sale of the vehicle for 55,000, reached out to Sunbury Motors already, reached out to Zimmerman's. I'd really like to stay with a fleet, would be Ford, which we have three SUVs now. So I'd like to continue down that road with the SUVs. We don't seem to have a problem with that. But gun vehicle from them, they put 45,000. Probably going to need somewhere between 10 and 15,000 to outfit that vehicle. So I believe with some of the sales to some of the stuff that we have out right now that we're going to be collecting on, we'll be able to make that happen without any, any type of, having to take any of the money. Come right out of the department budget. I'm also speaking with, they, a place out in Altoona, who said that they'd be given a 2025 SUV, zero miles, and they would outfit it for 55,000. So it's, I like to keep business in town. I know all council likes to do that as well. But if we can save $5,000, we save the $5,000.
Because we're conservative like that.
Yes, we are. Any questions?
All right, so I will make the motion to sell the F-150 for $55,000 and those funds that go back towards the new vehicle purchase and the LPR system for 4,000 to go towards the Axon project. Do I have a second?
Second.
Savage.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Ister. Roche's.
Yes. Moving on, new business, Councilman Warner.
I think I'll make a motion to add Ted Strausser to the harbor.
Second.
Martina.
Yes.
Ister. Savage.
Yes.
Roche's.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
And obviously, we just sold the, the sale of F-150, the old business. Moving on, the Innotek contract, and we're going to turn that over to you, Joel.
Okay. The, I know that there was some questions from council regarding the Innotek contract. Two of them I can ask off the top of my head. We have a representative here tonight from Innotek. And I know she's willing and able to answer any questions. The first question I have, and I can't point out to you exactly where in the contract that says it, but I can tell you it's in the part that's not in, on the papers. It's in the part that was in the website, if that makes sense. It states that online visits, or onsite visits are billed as extra costs, or can be billed as extra cost, and it didn't define how.
It's can be, and that's only if the need for sending an engineer onsite is outside of covered equipment or users.
Okay.
If anything that's covered under contract, if we have to, we're not able to sell it remotely, we automatically deploy somebody out there for no extra cost.
Okay, and what are, what is covered equipment, just for?
So that would be any PCs, servers, network switches, routers, access point, anything that's covered on your network.
So it doesn't have to be owned by you. It can be covered under the contract. That was one of the points of clarification we would, we need.
At no point in time is any of the hardware owned by us.
Right.
We do the purchasing on your behalf and then we install it on your behalf for this entire network.
Okay. Now, the other, the other question I had was as far as recovery from security incidents. It said that if it's a security incident, you are not obligated to help us recover there from. Can you help me explain what that means?
Legally, if we were to, if there were some type of like a ransomware attack or something that is stemming from, for instance, the only thing that I've never seen us not cover something or not help somebody recover. The only instance I can think of where something like that might come up is if you specifically went against recommendations that we made, went against best practices and advice, and there was an incident stemming from that.
Okay.
I would say that's extremely rare incidents.
And I saw that like phishing incidents and things like that aren't covered, but that is understandable, is that right?
Not covered in that it would be a billable incident or something.
Right, right. Okay, thank you. That answers my question. Council, do, does any of you have questions for, is it Samantha?
Yes.
Samantha, thank you. Josh Coleman. Anybody else?
Josh, last one. We were discussing earlier, second party, they had a second party do something in our contract?
I mean, something about the billing.
Oh, yeah, I can, the third-party provider. That, so if, we ended up in contract with you all, but obviously you really use third-party providers for some of it. I don't even understand part of it myself, it's too technical. But I understand that you go through third-party providers for provision of certain services. My understanding is your fees only go up if they bill you for more, or they bill us for more.
Well, so if there's a project that we agree to do for you, we guarantee that those projects are on time and under budget. So if there isn't some kind of overages, generally speaking, we make that.
Okay. Is that, well, that's, that's good. No, I'm not going to argue with you on that. That, that's not exactly what I got out of the contract, but.
And that's a great answer.
That's a helpful answer. The, let me just tell you exactly what it said. Give me one second. Oh, I know what it is. No, I got it. Third-party services such as malware, if they're subject to price increases, the price increase passes to us, is that right?
If our toolset cost increases, that may add to an additional cost, but that's, if you're covered under contract for a year, so that would be, that would increase.
That makes sense. Okay. I'm satisfied with that. The, yeah, okay. That answers that question. Other issues?
chimney.
Is this contract under the funds or is that a separate contract?
So just like if you were to purchase phones through Verizon, there's a phone to Verizon. Similarly with our system, there is a phone bill, but the support for that is covered under our cost.
Okay. Because I don't know if we ever resolved the phone question as far as the quote that we got. Yeah, but, but did that include Parkinson's and EPW in that?
Does our code?
Cash register system?
That I, I don't believe so. But I know if you guys were to, as soon as you're able to move forward with the contract, you immediately get access to our VCIO, which is a virtual chief information officer. He'll come in and meet with the entire council as often as possible and help you guys plan out any projects, any needs, including new systems that need to be implemented, whether that's cameras, phones, a cash register system, whatever the case may be. And that, I mean, you were to vote on it tonight, and by tonight, we'll be touched tomorrow if we start planning this.
Who's the VCIO, just so I know?
His name is Michael Gray. He was actually your VP.
He really is.
I actually talked to him on the phone two weeks ago. Just want to make sure we're talking about this thing that.
Mr. Gray, one I could discuss downstairs. I think we would take, of course, we're discussing the contract. We all have one more meeting, because once we sign that contract, we're done. Three years. We don't, we're doing this right now, so that's fine.
Any other?
If I could just, if I could add a point, why don't you just censor? If we, you guys are still under contract technically with InterDAP until the end of August. So moving forward with us now allows us to get our VCIO in, get our engineers in to start doing some mapping of your network and start helping you with the phone system and these other big projects, like the cash register system, the camera system, you guys have been talking about. The contract with us, does that actually officially start until August? So if you're not happy with any of the advice that we're giving you or conversations that we're having between now and August, there is room to forge getting out of this. You're not obligated. As of today, you still have until August 1st when our contract actually starts.
Then what she's saying is, we can sign the contract, cancel it anytime prior to August. Is that what you're saying?
Technically, you could. I don't think that you'll be unhappy enough with our service that you.
When, when is the first payment and what are the outs?
The first payment would start in August. If you guys are not happy with the service that you. If you guys are not happy with our service for whatever reason, then that's a condition, and I need to have an authorized time on our hands. So if that's, if it's a situation like that, which I've never seen in my time here, then certainly we can negotiate how to proceed.
Is there a penalty for canceling before August?
Before August, I don't know, it's not something that I've covered with Fred, but I'm.
That payment that you said in August, is that the monthly payment or the one-time payment?
That's the monthly payment.
The one with, one's the one-time payment?
We could break that up over several months. Whenever you guys are going to move forward and let me talk to my account, I guess we can, and get your eyes on that.
Well, we should come up with a, it's August first you said, for me, oh, sorry.
Yeah, the monthly would start August first.
Okay, so we would have cancellation made way prior to that, you have that option.
Well, you certainly have that option no matter when, and I think if we could talk to Britton, that may ease your, Mr. Britton, that may ease some concerns that we would hopefully not have to even worry about that, but if we do have to worry about it, we have anytime before August first. So it is definitely be, it'll be counted.
The cancellation?
Yeah.
Being that contract we're inside?
Any other questions for Samantha? Alright, any other questions? Alright, so I will make the motion to enter the contract with Innotec, do I have a second?
Ister?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Roche's?
Yes. Alright, moving on to.
I'm gonna bring back to you the car chief, I don't think, do we authorize a purchase of the individual's car of this?
That's what we want to do.
That's all we.
Yeah, I mean, when we talked about this previously, I think back in January, I think we already made the authorization, we just didn't want to make it official on the books that the vehicle was sold in council group.
Can I ask one more question real quick? Well, I was just asking that. No, but who do we contact with questions? Do we contact you, do I ask for Mike Britton?
Right now, I would just contact me directly, be easiest to get ahold of, and happy to get your question over to the right person.
Are you the only Samantha, I need your last name?
I am, yes.
Okay.
Just a couple of questions, and then we'll, along with this.
I agree.
Celebrate.
Thank you very much.
Of course.
Alright, thank you Samantha.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on to the climate action plan, obviously, we talked about this for the last couple of months, you had things set out. So I'll make the motion to carry out the climate action plan, do I have a second, secretary?
Martina?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Roche's?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Ister?
Alright, moving on here, so as you know, like I said, it'll be here before like National Night Out, the Hall of Treats, the Trunk or Treats, and the Halloween Parade, obviously those things cost money, and there are holidays coming up where you get things at a discounted rate. The chief would know, took a hit last year from the taser to raise some funds for National Night Out. I know, and he was laughing all the way when Harry pulled the trigger on me.
Five one.
Yeah, for some odd reason, he didn't get a single ticket in his thing, I don't know what happened there. But I'm just asking if council would be willing to, we have economic development fund, I mean, if we were willing to take three thousand for those four different events for the kids to help, you know, National Night Out is, you know, gets kids back to school supplies, bikes and scooters for them, and trunk or treat, hallway treats, and the Halloween Parade, also a bunch of kid-friendly things, so. I mean, I like to take three thousands for those different core events, so we can kind of, like, when there's sales, we go out and buy stuff rather than paying for it at total cost. So I didn't know if council had an issue or concern with that, or thoughts or opinions.
Who would be handling the, for the event, the, the events, who would be handling the money?
Well, everything would obviously flow through the treasurer, but like I said, for all the different ones, they get their receipts and submit them in so they're properly taken out of the proper line item, because there is, there is a line item for National Night Out and the Halloween Parade throughout the police and the trunk or treats, so that's all would go through the treasury department, they're proper line items.
Only thing is, John, you brought a good point, I think all money spent, there should be a financial report turned back in for every one of those activities.
I mean, we have no problem with that, all the receipts, anytime anything gets obviously paid for, it goes through the treasury department, so they have all the receipts for all this stuff. Questions, anyone?
I think that there's, there's receipts with analysis financial reports, so we would need their financial report and the receipts.
Yeah.
The front end and the back end.
Yeah, that's fine. Any other questions? Alright, alright, sir, I'll make the motion to, for us to allocate three thousand dollars for National Night Out, hallway treats, trunk or treat, and the Halloween Parade, do I have a second?
A second.
Is, are we doing three, I'm sorry, are we doing three thousand?
No, it's total.
Right. Are we, are we doing a fourth, a fourth, a fourth, a fourth, or how are we?
Yeah, it'd be pretty much a fourth, a fourth, a fourth, and a fourth.
Ister?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Roche's?
Yes, Councilman Ister.
I'm going for the construction here in City Hall, code of the summer, two thousand one fifty-three thirty eight. Changing a, calendars in the code office and city hall, or student clerk's office, any questions?
No, sir.
Not make that form work.
Second.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Roche's?
Yes.
Ister?
Alright, keep going, Councilman Ister.
Yes, Judy is here to see you.
She's not.
They've been working on this sculpture, signage, think Sunbury for some time now, and they had it at different locations now. The location we're working with right now is in Cameron Park, by the Flight Bowl End, be the west end. Any questions on the design work or anything, photographs here, I believe we all seen it in the past.
From last meeting, yes.
And they have all kinds of numbers here, we're doing what, so forth, they were asking the city to contribute ten thousand dollars towards it. And it's gonna be a good, because it's gonna be a focal point for the city for many years down the road. Any questions about?
It's coming out of your budget, right?
Yes, it's the police department. The, yeah, is there any questions?
No, sir.
It'll be maintained by us.
Yeah, before the power hooked up, it will be paid for a little bit of lights and so forth. So it'll only work half the time? So it'll only work half the time?
Can I just ask a question? Because I'm all for it, I'm not going against that, but I know money's come out of that, as of right now, more money has to come out with the comprehensive plan, right? Are we gonna have enough to cover?
I mean, we just took three out of it, so right now, we just took ten.
We're down to twenty?
Will be three overs, there's twenty-five in it, so what?
We're at twenty-five, I thought we took something out of it recently, okay, so we're at the twenty-five, okay.
Yeah.
That will be fine, that's fine.
Roche's?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Ister?
Keep going, Councilman Ister.
Yes, sweep, notice received to the contractor. Any questions about that?
Second.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Roche's?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Savage?
Councilman Savage?
I'll make a motion for the approval of abstracts and vouchers for the general fund in the amount of two hundred eighty-five thousand, three hundred four dollars, seventy-three cents. Liquid fuels in the amount of thirteen thousand, five hundred fifty-one dollars, forty-seven cents. Private grants in the amount of thirty-five thousand, two hundred twenty-nine dollars, fifty-five cents. And payroll in the amount of eighty-one thousand, one hundred twenty-six dollars, thirty-two cents.
Roche's?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Ister? Savage?
Yes.
Alright, discussion items, moving on, Councilman Barnhart.
I noticed that the emergency that we had on Tuesday night, there was a little bit of items there like water and so forth. I think it would be nice if we discussed it, I talked to Vicki Rosie Grant, she tried to start it at Goodwill. If we would have like a truck that had supplies in it, maybe a pop-up tent, because there was people that were displaced and they had said we have no place to go.
John, the rehab unit, I called for the rehab unit from Danville, and they were there within the first half hour. Danville has one, Danville always comes. I'm gonna tell you from the fire department side, that individual that you just mentioned came to us over a year ago about setting one of these up. She was gonna do everything, Goodwill was gonna do everything, they had money for her vehicle and all this, and that was the last we heard about. Same time, that person was doing that, they wanted Northumberland, I know. I think it's a good thing to have, but Danville does a very good job, Danville comes to everybody. Danville was set up at the rescue fire, during that, we had them set up there, they were there, I don't know what you knew about that. But that's also part of, and hopefully, the message got relayed, Wednesday night, at six P M., there's a critique after act review, it's gonna be held at my one center. I urge all of council members, all of department heads to be there, because there's a lot of things we did good, and there's a lot of things we need to do better.
Not to interrupt you, but you said one from Danville.
Right.
I didn't even know Danville had one, did anybody hear, I mean, I think that'd be nice to have, and I understand what you're saying, but don't you think that'd be nice for somebody to have, especially when we're consolidating?
I, no, I can just jump in real quick. Council has done a really great job, I know Councilman Ister with the event trailer. The event trailer down there has the pop-ups, I've been using it lately, it has the pop-ups, it has chairs, it has tables, it has generators. It has lights on the outside, like that, I was actually gonna speak with you, and Josh, and Councilman Ister, and Eric, that, we're council. We've already put something in place of that.
Being the chief, the president, Mr. Alex came to me, they have their trailer down there.
Right.
It's not gonna be utilized hardly at all.
Right, they did that for a little bit, and they tried it, I will tell you this, like, Danville comes at a cost, because Danville supplies everything, you know, they ask for donations, but they don't have a lot. I think it's a good idea, and like Chief Brown, I mean, we never gave a trailer, but I think this is a prime opportunity, also with this, to get somebody in our AM department that's gonna be involved in this, and replace the people that are there that are not around. So we have somebody that's gonna do this, and they can, they can spirit end this thing, I mean, that's part of something that they can do, I mean, it'd be a great thing. The city already has a trailer, I'm sure the fire department throws some stuff into it.
You get somebody from one of the women's auxiliary, the fire company?
Right, I mean, that's possible too, we just need to know how we're gonna get that trailer better.
I would love to spirit end someone, yeah, because if I was, I'd say, if you want that, it would, you're actually having to be, you have to have the stuff, there's some things that we need to, you know, bring up, but you have a lot of the, all that stuff. But you would wanna have water, you know, things like that, but if you have a twenty-four hour police department, it doesn't mean that, you know, we have free officers on, we have major men like that, we call in, but we also use crime scenes as well. So, you know, from the last crime scene we had, we ended up using pop-ups. Would you really utilize that trailer, if you wouldn't like to, I would like, I'm sure Ed had, you and Judy really worked together on that.
Yes, I'm sure, how many people were displaced that night? They had no place, they said we have no place to go.
There was, there was a weapon, the Red Cross was there, the Red Cross displaced them folks, because I had them come in. So they were, they were there, they did place the folks that were displaced that night, some of them like family, what I believe was eleven total, because where the building collapsed, and then the other house, the tree come through. The other people were just asked to leave until we removed the hazard of the trees that night, that were, um, not ready for on the rest. I think it was eleven, I didn't look back at the fire department.
Over the whole night, I left it on.
We were, we were there all night until three thirty in that time, along with Coke was there.
Like, Derek brought you coffee and something?
Yes, he did. Why?
You want to check if the emergency's done, though, see?
I sure, I don't wanna speak out of turn, but I, there's a lot of stuff in that trailer at the emergency, that I'm sure that they would be willing to, probably be utilized, that they have, they have all the fans, all the food and fans in it. There's, they purchase a bunch of stuff.
The misters?
The misters, yes.
There's a lot, there's all kinds of chairs.
Do you spirit end it, chief?
I'll do.
And I'm sure that I have to talk to the powers that be down there.
Another useful tip, so the night of the incident, the next morning when we had come back from the county's perspective too, we were there with Clinton and myself, we spoke with C S O, Megan Bear, their C E O, and she offered to have a trailer too, so they have like water, they have food, and she said, you know, they realized, she called attention to the fact that you guys had Danvilles already, but they said anytime that there's another emergency that you guys can give them a direct call as well. C S O, Central Social Hannah, and they were willing to work with what needs to go on it for agencies. So I mean, I think it's great that we're gonna talk about having one, but before we agree, I think we'll see what we have and see how we can customize ours to help others too.
I agree, chief, I have a good idea, I mean, I've worked relationships pretty good, so I can be, work out, and make sure we get contacts, and how we're gonna get that out.
I just mean that instead of the three housing trailers, it'd be a housing trailer, a food trailer, or something, or maybe you have three different things, three different areas that specialize differently.
I mean, Danville's very good, but we've had a lot of other fires since that, I don't know if any kind of available. The issue with it is, it takes a long time to get their setup, I'm just, I testified the night that we were looking for the kid out there, when we called for him, I'll make him get set up, whatever we were looking for. We have used them.
Speaking of that night, I think, police department, the fire department, you guys did a fantastic job, did everything under control, get it taken care of, getting out for the safety of everybody, you guys did a great job.
Yeah, I had to put that, like, we were the first with the fire department there, police department contract, we have to continue to, I think, fire department, coast department, you guys did a fantastic job, I know the mayor can come out, council, council come out, and say, I think you guys did a great job. I mean, I can, would not even want to take any credit for that, because you guys, you guys did a fantastic job, especially the fire department.
I do have a full pipeline, and we'll have some radio traffic, and everything, and all that, that'll be stuff that we'll discuss when we're in the night. It's not, it's bad, but we learned from our mistakes and how we can do things better.
It's Wednesday night at six.
Wednesday night at six, at my one center agreement, they offered that, I figured it was a mutual place for everybody to come.
Cheryl, can we look for grants, I was told tonight that they need new noses, those are.
Did I tell them?
I'm done.
Councilman Barnhart, I mean, Councilman Savage, Councilman Ister, there we go, sorry, we're making my way down the line.
We have a bill for me that has been broken out, because there's some of those trees are armed on Susquehanna Avenue, which we've been taking down in the project coming up.
Okay.
So, one thing I was trying to bring up was the fact that we have to go back to that contractor.
You have all the info, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I told, I talked to him Friday and asked him to break it out, I haven't gotten it yet, but he said he was going to.
So we can take and possibly pick up trees of those Susquehanna Avenue, I don't know where they were.
There was a couple, there was, there was a couple on Susquehanna Avenue, and then there was two that were on Julia that were just off of Susquehanna Avenue that wouldn't be taken out of the project, taken out during the project. Not that we did, no, not that we did.
There's been, make sure we had, on Susquehanna, the next block up, on the east side, where the tree up there, I haven't seen a leaf in about three years. That's some debt that is plenty right on Susquehanna.
I just have a question with that, can the fire department get an address and then contract, can you get to the building purpose? Should we stay there, we stayed there for five, five years, he should at least make a donation to the building, for that, for the building part of it? The debt was out of the kindness.
Talk to Mr. Back, I've got information, if you know, I don't direct.
Alright.
Appreciate having that information.
Alright, moving on, announcements, think the rank two is this Friday, the sixteenth, starting at twelve, it runs through Sunday, May eighteenth. The twenty, May twenty-sixth council meeting will be canceled because that is Memorial Day. Once again, the May twenty-sixth council meeting will be canceled because that is Memorial Day. The American Legion Memorial Parade and Ceremony is on May twenty-sixth, at, starting at ten A, ten A M. The parade route will start on Raspberry Avenue, to go on Tenth Street, the market, the fourth, and end at the cemetery, where the ceremony will take place. The crime watch meeting is May twenty-eighth at five P M. at the police station. T V recycling event, a hundred TVs will take place on May thirty-first from eight to ten at the city ice skating rink. Registration is a month. Uh, T V Recycling Event, a hundred T Vs will take place on May thirty-first from eight to ten, at the City Ice skating rink, registration is a must, please call Jeff or Robin at two eight six seven eight two zero, extension five oh T, uh, five oh T, five oh two, or five oh three, it is one dollar per pound, so if your TV weighs forty-five pounds, that's forty-five dollars, not a dollar TV, so one dollar per pound. Uh, Career Link is hosting a spring job fair in Cameron Park on June fifth, starting at twelve P M. going to three. Dagenstein Library hosting animal rescue fair at Central Park from, on June sixth, from ten A M. to twelve.
That's a, there's a correction, that's not correct.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Our summer reading program kickoff on Saturday, June seventh.
Okay.
There's animals going to be there.
What she is. Uh, the next council meeting then will be on held June ninth at six fifteen, then the Dagenstein Library hosting a talent show in Central Park on June thirteenth, from five P M. to seven P M. And Chris Restate Farm hosting Market Street Mixer in Cameron Park on June twenty-first, starting at five P M.
Hey, guys, up here, before you go, if you're interested, the, the, uh, city cemetery, Pen, uh, the Penn Cemetery Project is finished, it's up here if you wanna see it, uh, sunberrycemetery dot com, you can go on, there is thirty-five hundred, uh, stones in our cemetery, every single one of them is G I S. pinpointed. You can see who's in there if you wanna look, they're not, some of the stones we can't read, because they're, they're so badly, uh, deteriorated, but the pictures up here of what it looks like online, history of the cemetery, and why we did what we did, because of the records that were lost, but it's finally done, it's up here to see, like I said, online, sunberrycemetery dot com.
It was all done by Bucknell students.
Bucknell students, they're graduating Wednesday, they can't be here tonight, but they're, they unveiled it to us, uh, last week, and this is the final project, it's finally done.
Oh. Jeff, thank you, sir, thank you.
Any other announcements, anyone? All right, at this time, is there any public comment at this time? All right, I'm gonna start here, we're coming back, please state your name, sir.
Here's Boomball, I'm here for the same reason I was here two years ago, eighteen months ago, a year ago, all has to do with Mossar and North Ninth Street. The dead end street. That runs into my garage, okay? Now, we can no longer maintain that grass up there, that belongs to the city, we've done it for close to fifteen years, we're done maintaining it, okay? When the storm went through here, this storm here a week or two ago, limbs down all over, we took care of it. Dead trees in there, we paid hundreds of dollars to have them cut out, so they wouldn't damage our fence and all, at our expense. Now, apparently, the city does not wanna do anything about it, because it's been warming up, but you're going to have to maintain that grass up there.
Let me see, you make sure that's on Steve's list then?
What's that?
Josh just has to make sure I can tell Steve about that tomorrow.
The director, the supervisor, public works, the street department, so he knows the maintenance, because he's the one who oversees it.
All right, because it's mowed, our lawn and lawn the other side is mowed every week, so we expect it to be respectable to the neighbors and all, all right? Now, was there any, uh, advancement on that?
I went up and looked at it.
On the, uh, yeah, I'm referring back to the, uh, uh, issue with, uh, us taking ownership of that.
Well, that's what.
That's why I went up and looked at it, I went up and looked at it and I ran it, and quite honestly, and I, I'm not putting this on you, sir, but I honestly thought you were gonna call me. Um, I'm glad to see you here tonight, because we can dedicate that street over to you, I did the research, okay? But, in all honesty, I knew your name was Mr. Boomball, I didn't even remember your first name to look you up.
Yeah.
I, I know now, I wrote it down, so I apologize, but like, quite honestly, um, I'm gonna be getting ahold of you, I believe we can dedicate that directly to you, okay? I don't think that's gonna be an issue, as long as the neighbors don't have an issue, that's the only caveat.
They're not gonna have an issue.
Well, I have to be known as the neighbors, but as long as that's not an issue, I think we'll be able to do that for you and get it taken care of.
Uh, somebody bought the house across the street, uh, from Lewis or about the lake, that's the investment property they have a front and out home. But, uh, there's no issue with parking or anything, because they do one side of the street one day, another day they do the other side of the street, so there's no issue with parking whatsoever.
I saw, I saw, I dropped a load.
Pardon me?
The last time you were here, I went up and looked.
Well, thank you, I didn't know.
Well, I didn't know your first name.
It was, it was that simple, right, Jim?
All right, yeah.
Well, so how about after the meeting, you got, you can get his number that way?
That's fine.
Okay, now, I have a couple other issues while I'm here. These electric bikes and scooters, some of these are just gonna get killed or hurt on one of them, the way they fly up and down these streets, I mean, not ten miles north, I'm talking thirty miles north, on that fourth street, in and out of traffic, weaving. His, and I'm not talking about handicapped.
Yeah, you're talking about the bikes and the scooters that are gonna go fast.
I mean, they're, they're getting to the point where it's unbelievable.
Yeah, um, some of those bikes I know, we don't, we basically have a policy, they won't stop for us, and if we sometimes, I know a couple of the officers, they've gotten behind them, and if they don't stop, we're not gonna pursue a, a, a bike like that. Um, it's only gonna cause damage or harm to someone else, but with that being said, also, forty-nine C C and below don't have to be registered. Um, they basically be on the street, and this is what they do, they'll pedal for a bike, and then, when they see us or something like, or, when they see us, they'll start pedaling their bike, not their, their motorized.
They should have the same restrictions, is a bicycle supposed to stop at a red light?
Correct.
Okay, they don't stop at red lights, they don't stop at soft signs, some of those are either gonna get hurt or killed on one of them.
Yeah, and, and I know when the officers are out, I, I, I attest to this, actually, they stopped four bicycles, and out of the four bicycles, three of them, they took methadone off three of the bikes, so.
Another resource that, uh, I think they should be registering, because if they do damage to somebody's vehicle.
Well, absolutely.
Then I'm sure they don't have any insurance.
There was a bike just recently, they came off of Secus Street, that went into a person's vehicle, um, and there was a lot of white and blood. And the order they gave, they found, made a report on it, so, I, I, I know what you mean, um, I know, I know the three little officers, when they do stops, when they make the stops.
You didn't hear that?
I didn't, other things often, they, you don't have a light, you don't have a, you know, different things that we, that we have to, the city, the ordinance, would make those stops, and like I said, I mean, they just took it out, it was wanted, it was the last year and a half, I mean, you got about a quarter.
Okay, my other question, uh, the food trucks have come into somewhere and they're set up in the street, any day of the week or whatever, do they have a permit for this?
Yeah, they have to stop in the code office to get their, their, either six month or annual, I forget the proper term, permit to sell in the city, yes, and they're all registered at the code offices.
And, uh, does anybody know what that rate is, how much?
I believe, I just spoke to some, I think it's seventy-five dollars for six months.
I think it's fifty, 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 right?
Sixty for six months, is that right? So sixty for six months or a hundred and twenty per year.
And they can set up any place they want to set up, huh?
They, they have to have permission of the property, if they're going, let's say, for example, if they're going on, we'll say Sunbury Motors parking lot, they have to have permission to go to the different, if it's private property, yes.
Yeah, well, I'm, we bring, there was one down first, I don't know who it is, but there was one, uh, right off the market, one floor.
Yeah.
Set up with the N B. out and stuff, I mean, everybody deserves to make a lick, okay? So we're running business here in Sunbury, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and I think it's only fair, you know, that we should pay good wages.
Yeah, like I said, they, we do have the permits and they have to pay them, that's one of the things, if one codes out, if they ask, hey, they know who's registered and who's not.
And they have, they have to have five foot of walkway, if they set up a canopy or something, they have, on the sidewalk, you have to get five feet of pedestrian.
Their shoulder walkway.
And they have, and they have, they have to have a parking pass in that case, they have to have a parking pass, and according to the ordinance too, you can't leave a food truck or anything in the same spot overnight, you do have to take it home, to your home base, we'll call it, night.
Okay.
Is that it, Jim? Sure? All right.
Don't leave, I need your number.
Jim?
No, no, your name, my God, don't leave, I need your number, I said.
All right, any other public comments, I'm just making my way back, please state your name, ma'am.
Sandy Field, I wanted to thank the community for doing the climate action plan, and, uh, I have a question and a comment, um, so the comment is, all that stuff you guys talked about for, uh, the night of the storm and the trailers and that kind of thing is the kind of thing that we talk about in the climate action, so that kind of emergency preparedness, and what would work for Sunbury, and what Sunbury's resources are, what's high ground in Sunbury in case of flood, things like that, educational for the public. So I just wanted to mention that, that's just, that's just part of the process. Um, and the question is, how should we, who should we move forward with as far as, we're gonna put, put your name in, to Penn State, and then who will be in contact here?
I would just send it to Mr. Backer yet.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment, please state your name, ma'am.
My name's Ellie Cogerty, and I just would like to say that I think an awful lot of money was spent to fix up Cameron Park, the, uh, trees and bushes and everything look beautiful, but they aren't being maintained the way they should, and as you enter Market Street, and you look at Cameron Park, you can't even see the beautiful fowl. So the rose bushes, they're called knockout roses, they're easy to trim, they should be trimmed about every three years, and it looks terrible, it doesn't speak well for a street department, and I know some walkers do a wonderful job, so I think that needs to be checked out, and it's very simple to clip roses, you just need a truck to get rid of it, brambles, thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Cogerty, they're wanting this to be done, and it's not, which walkers and parkers, my department parks and rep, Mr. Yoder will be trimming the, the bushes, he does it every couple of years, like you mentioned, okay?
Thank you.
Any other public comment, please state your name?
Melissa Rouse, Dagenstein Community Library, just a reminder that our ribbon cutting ceremony for our story walk is Wednesday at four o'clock, a huge thank you to the city for helping, um, the kids clean up all of Fort Discovery, we only lost one story walk panel, so we went out today, and it is now ready for the kids to start reading and having help with our seats, so it is Wednesday at four o'clock, you all are invited, I know you have a after action meeting at six, so you have plenty of time to get the Fort Discovery, where the ribbon cutting ceremony.
Just bring your umbrella.
Well, no, we're doing a rain or shine, so.
It's supposed to be right now on Wednesday, so we should be good.
See?
But Thursday's a whole big book, also, that's a.
Um, on the other, on another side, with my S R I hat on, I just wanna say thank you very, very much for supporting the Think Sunbury Sculpture, um, I also wanted to make note that S R I is also donating ten thousand dollars towards that sculpture, so that this, we're not asking the city to supply all of the funds, we do have, we did come up with half that funds, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comment, please state your name, ma'am.
Amy Diener, I'm gonna piggyback on Melissa, I'm president of S R I this year, and, um, the S R I is kind of a store group for the Blueprint Community Downtown Sunbury Team, which is where we've initiated some of the grant monies through that program for the Think Sunbury Sculpture, so, um, S R I and Blueprint Communities Group, and just because I wanted to bring it up, we're at our one year anniversary of the Downtown Sunbury Team for the Blueprints Communities Group, we've gotten multiple grants to do some outdoor, um, our, uh, engagement activities here downtown, it's helped us initiate a few other events and activities in the downtown, we are trying to make sure that we get everybody's input, so if you haven't heard of the Blueprint Communities Program, or talked to anybody from the Downtown Sunbury Team, please make sure, Melissa, myself, Jody, Derek, Ted Strasser, who's gonna be on the hardboard, we very strategically put this team together to try and make sure that we had a little bit of aspect of everything going on, and that we can communicate and cooperate well with the city and other entities and organizations to do things for our community like that Think Sunbury Sculpture. We're not done yet, we have a graduation ceremony in November, but this is a five to ten year program that we're involved in, so please help us, help the community, ask us questions, come to us for information, stay involved and engaged, because that's what we're trying to do for Sunbury.
Thank you. Any other public comment, please state your name, ma'am?
Yeah, Brandon Diener, I just have two questions, my first question is, the two hundred fifty thousand dollars police grant, is that only to be used for cameras, or is there other uses for that?
The, the, the grant is actually with the school, sort of, so it's for the school.
So it hit, so there's other things like, than the police, the school police department, that it can also be used for?
Right, so, yes, yep, yep, so, um, Sean Williams, Chief Downtown, he's also in our office with us as well.
Okay, and then my second question is, um, for the three thousand dollar economic development funds that are going toward the four projects, um, who is, do you have a designated person that is authorized to spend that money, or is it just whoever?
Basically, with all the vent, I mean, they're, basically, they're all police sponsored events, so any type of expenditure will go through the chief or myself, and Renee, of the front office, she's normally the bookkeeper and all, but everything will flow through us, saying what we wanna do and not do like we do, as we've done the last couple of years.
Okay, then my last thing is, I just want a extreme thank you for the cooperation of everyone coming together to help clean up the city after the storm, because it did not take long, and everybody worked well together, and that is one of the things that I love about this community, when there is a need and it's called out, people come together to do it, thank you.
Any other public comment, please state your name, sir?
Joe Bartelo, on, uh, June seventh, uh, the Downtown Sunbury Sandwich Stroll is gonna take place on Saturday, June seventh, from eleven to two, and tickets are on sale, online right now, they're ten dollars per person to go through the sandwich stroll, and isn't, uh, Sunbury kickoff, isn't that, uh, June seventh also?
Correct, yes, six and seven, yes.
Cause that wasn't on your announcements either, so.
There's worse, I guess there's worse things than that. All right, any other public comment at this time? All right, I've turned this meeting.